Thank you.
The bottom will be some.
I'm.
Down.
You're saying.
It's almost as if I could just do it from home. I don't want to be the in person.
Yeah.
Boy impact.
I don't think so.
I will be.
When he's on your back and stuff and um. Doesn't work out.
So.
So she'll.
Why?
Wouldn't click by anyway.
Well, I'm trying.
And so we have ten.
What was it?
Two. Realizing that I had air.
Let me put my phone.
And then we have.
Oh, let me go get the seat.
I got it. I'll rest out. So much. Yeah.
Yeah.
For Anna, who's actually. No, she looks a little tan.
Yeah, oh yeah.
She looks warm with that.
She's freezing.
She's freezing in Florida. Okay, we'll go with that. I'll let you believe.
Yeah.
That's history. I know.
Generic. We're going to be. Beaver sensible. I kind of asked for it. You didn't. He was. No, don't you. She feels. Charlie.
He is not nice.
Good morning.
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 Great.
Good to see you all. Good to have a full house. Um, I am Chair Karen DeBois Walton. And we'll call this meeting, the Connecticut State Board of Education called for February fourteenth, twenty twenty four at nine thirty a.m. This meeting to order. Ask invite you to join us in a state.
To flag the United States of America into the Republic of the stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Happy Valentine's Day.
I what?
Benny in their in their red today, right on theme. Um, happy Black History Month. The day after the. No storm. Threatened to shut shut everything down. Good to have you all with us today. Our Commissioner will join us shortly. Um, and I will note for the record that our Vice Chair is present uh via via the screen. We're not going to be envious of her warmer warmer weather, it looks like in the background there. Uh, so glad to have you with us. Uh, we'll begin with public present public participation. Um, as I call your name, you'll be asked to come to the front here at the mic if you could state your name for the record. And uh your marks, if you would limit them for three minutes, that would be very helpful. Uh, if you start to go beyond three minutes, I will give you a dead hole reminder and after you wrap up that final thought. So with that, our first person will be Leonard Lockhart.
Don't talk about.
Buck out.
The morning Leonard Lockhart went to Connecticut. Mortimer Chairman DeBois Walton, State Board of Education members and Commissioner Dr. Russell Tucker. I am Leonard Lockhart, a member of the Water Board of Education, President of the Association of Boards of Education, also known as CAE. I am proud to have represented CAE along with the immediate past President of CAE, Lizard Brown, from the Waterbury Board of Education on the Educated Evaluation and Support Council. We have worked diligently and latently to breed consensus on the Connecticut Leader and Educated Evaluation and Support Plans before you today. Diverse experiences and perspectives were honored in this process. We began with a set of guiding principles and researched best practices in Connecticut and other states. The new guidelines promote educator and teacher continuous improvement to support both the student and educator. Um, continuous improvement, sorry, improvement to support both student and educator learning, development, growth and achievement. There is a strong focus on professional learning for educators, and we know boards of education must make support professional learning a voluntary priority. Building trust among the council members was a key to our ability to reach consensus. Trust will always be a foundation for implementation of these guidelines in our schools and districts. We look forward to the collaborative efforts necessary for local implementation. Thank you for the opportunity to serve on the council on my on behalf of me and Ms. Brown, and we urge you to approve the rule guideline before you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Jordan.
Good morning, everybody. Good, I am Mary Jordan. I have represented AMT Connecticut on the EES Council for evaluation updates. I ask law to please support the state model which is coming before you today. Uh, the EES Council, as Leonard said, worked hard in an environment of collaboration. We had to build trust. We had to build respect. We didn't just build a state model. We built relationships among ourselves, and we are looking forward to that work continuing in every district in our state. As a best. We are moving forward to the implementation of this model or the guidelines and other arenas. But this state model we apply into the guidelines. It will provide the environment of agency, trust and respect for our educators because of the emphasis on continuous learning. We think that the state model embodies the vision that was set out. Where all educators and leaders have the opportunity for continuous learning and feedback to develop and grow both individually and collectively. So that Connecticut students experience growth and success. They're at the center of all the work that we do, and we're looking forward to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Samantha Lucky and Kenneth Joseph.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and good morning, Madam of the State Board of Education. Kenneth Joseph from Booker T. Washington Academy, and I'm here in support of Booker T. Washington Academy's charter renewal, and I just wanted to continue to say the good thing that's happening at Booker T. Washington. We are working to continue our rigorous academics. As we come out of the pandemic, we continue to growing and supporting our scholars. We also working on growing our enrichment programs at Booker T. Washington. We continue to focus on high attendance and get our kids in school. As the state says, we're working on our our state initiative, school is better with you. So we continue to work with our kids, getting them in school, because once they're in our seats, that's when the learning takes place. And I'll pass over to my colleague.
Good morning. My name is Samantha Lucky, and I am here in support of Booker T. Washington Academies. I'm a member of the Elevate team, and I'm really excited to be with you all today. Thank you for the opportunity um to add on to what my amazing colleagues already said. Booker T. Washington Academy is a place where kids are learning, yes, they're being pushed rigorously, yes, but they feel safe and they are happy, and they're able to build positive relationships with their peers and with the adults that help foster that amazing education. When we look at a school, we of course want kids to make academic gains, which the kids of Booker T. Washington have done. We want kids to come to school and see gains even past what happened in the pandemic, which Booker T. Washington has done. Before this meeting, we want our kids to come to school and to go into a classroom and say, if I had the choice to leave, I won't leave because I love it so much. And that's the work that Booker T. Washington Academy is doing and will continue to do with your support. Thank you.
Tonya Marina. Correctly, Marina. Tonya Marina, they had to step up, they had to step out. Fran Fiori.
Good morning to everyone. My name is Brandy Fiori, and I serve as the co-president of the Connecticut Federation of School Administrators. I represent over a thousand administrators in the state of Connecticut, which include principals, assistant principals, special education supervisors, directors of curriculum and instruction, directors of pupil personnel services, education technology, technology administrators, and more. Over the past two years, I've had the privilege of serving on the EES Council and was able to work alongside some of the finest educators in the state of Connecticut, who I have the utmost respect for. These individuals never settled just to complete this plan. This group worked and scrutinized over every piece of this document until it became the best evaluation plan for our teachers and administrators, no matter what district you come from. We researched and studied what was best practice and then put these ideas into something that will make a difference in the teaching and learning of our students. I want to take this opportunity to thank the members of the State Department of Education and the EES Council for recognizing the importance of leader development. Unlike other plans in the past, the evaluation of our leaders needs to be a separate document that addresses the nuances of administrators in this process. When you think about it, there is no other group that is more affected by the creation of this document than administrators. They not only serve as the evaluators, but are also being evaluated by this plan. Administrators will be the users and the recipients of a solid and meaningful document that will help all of our students. Thank you again for allowing me and CFSA to represent administrators from around the state, and I ask for your support of this document.
And Healy.
Good morning, fairwoman and board members. My name is Kim Healy, and I'm here as a Wilted resident, but also as an appointed member of the Reading Leadership Implementation Council. I was sent to Lake to watch your December meeting, the Right to Read Law was discussed, and I came up here because I wanted to provide you with a different perspective on the laws of movement nation than you probably already heard. As I'm sure you may be aware, the law was buried in a twenty twenty one eight hundred plus page intimate implementer implementer bill. And even though there have been claims that it had overwhelming support, for many of the state reps and senators that I have spoken to, they say they were told the waiver process would be simple and not only based on which programs they that they were using. For others, in their defense, the fiscal note had no dollar values noted for the potential costs to districts, which is estimated to be over a hundred million dollars. This is why you're only hearing from districts now that they have received their waiver decisions. They never thought that their district would be told if the state knew best and that they were doing things wrong, when we can clearly see the districts who were denied waivers are doing significantly better than those who were approved. I've talked to many reading teachers and specialists from across the state, and they are extremely frustrated and disappointed they have not been included in the discussions. At a time when our teachers are leaving the profession at record numbers, we cannot de-professionalizing them or discounting their years of experience. Before I go on, I want you to know that the work around ensuring kids learn to read is extremely important to me, and I have invested hundreds of hours of my personal time on the council and out in the public. As I believe that every child that can learn how to read should be taught to read. I support the science of reading, and I believe that every district who submitted a waiver deserved to get one. They spend hundreds of hours gathering the data and supporting documentation that they fulfilled. They fulfilled the law's requirements and are following the science of reading. It is a sad day when a government agency tells parents that they know better than the teachers working in their children's classrooms. At a recent legislative breakfast, a superintendent and reading council member said it perfectly. Programs are not the answer, but curriculum intervention plans for those not achieving standards and well-trained teachers are. We should spend the limited resources we have on where the greatest number of children are struggling to learn to read, instead of forcing all districts to purchase programs they cannot afford and have no data to support better outcomes than they are already achieving. It was noted in a December news article that Waterbury had been using the Science of Reading program since twenty sixteen under UConn's Connecticut Partnership for Literary Success. I have been trying to get more information on the funding of this initiative and the outcome data. Their website shows that most alliance districts participate and therefore did not need waivers. This program has been going on since twenty twelve. I appreciate and applaud all the efforts of those involved today, bringing the Science of Reading to Connecticut home study. I implore you to trust the experts, the teachers, interventionist superintendents, local Board of Education members in every district who has taken the time to verify that they have implemented the Science of Reading into their districts and grant them a waiver.
And grant them.
Yeah, I'm done. With those massive unfunded and unsupported mandate. Boss and manpower have already been enormous. Let's close the achievement gap instead by bringing the districts that needed the most the curriculum interventions and teacher training, teacher training to make it. Thank you.
Yep. A. A. Ham. One more time, is it? Tonya Marina? And B. Ham. Thanks. Seeing no further other comment, we thank you all for the time you take to come up here and express your your opinions. Uh, the board takes into consideration all all public comment that we hear. Well. Need to dig in on those items, so thank you. Uh, there's no reason for executive session at today's meeting. Um, so I will move to item four A, consideration of the minutes, the January third, twenty twenty four, the education meeting, and I will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes.
It's a move.
Second. Thank you. Been moved and properly seconded. Are there any edits required for the minutes? Need no corrections? All those in favor? Or? Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Um, I do know what what uh. It it means to come up and join these meetings when you have lots of other things to do, so um I note that we do have some superintendents and and team members here for the items on consent agenda. Um, so I'd ask you to look at item nine, uh, A, B, C, and D are items on consent agenda. Is there any board member wishing to remove an item from consent? Any board member with an item? Being none, um, I'll and get a motion to approve consent agenda.
Move.
Your second? Second. Thank you. All in favor? Bye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations to our Commissioners Network schools. We're getting extension year five in Hartford, Hartford Public High, in New Britain, Poloski Middle School, and Slade Middle School, and Smalley Elementary. Um, certainly want to take this time to also thank Vice Chair Benham for her work at her committee um in reviewing and going on site and giving them. So congratulations to you all. Look forward to an additional year in Commissioners Network. Returning back to our agenda in order. The Chair. Uh, it is good to see you all. It has been certainly wonderful to have this opportunity um to be in these meetings and the provided an opportunity to join in some in some committee work that's been really important. I did want to lift up and acknowledge the work that the council that's been working on uh our modernizing and revising of our educator certification process in the state. This group was convened. Um, it was something that the Commissioner and I had discussed, and then it was something that the legislature picked up. Um, and a council was convened that included a really broad participation. Um, and and I have the opportunity to represent this board on that process. We had a vicious goal that we could simply get to something for this short legislative session, um, and we are we are moving toward that. Another meeting coming up, uh, but it is an exciting re-envisioning of what it may look like um to certify teachers that will be um rooted in what's best practice, um, rooted in data, rooted in making it easier to navigate and and simpler and um and and aligned with the what we look for in educators. I just want to lift that up and thank the team members from the State Department that have been um supporting that work and and providing leadership to that work. And the many council members who've been part of that. Report is subject to more about that as legislation legislative session is now open. Um, and there potentially may be a piece of legislation lifted around that item. Also want to thank each member of our our board who is leading on one of our on one of our many committees um and doing and doing that work. And I want to particularly lift up, um, we are at that point where terms start to come to an end, and I want to acknowledge acknowledge people's service, um, but hope that there'll be another term coming, so this is not not a goodbye, but just acknowledging that at this point, um, uh, the ZV's term, Mr. Clement's term, uh, Mr. Eckley's term, this Er's term, um, this Cruz's term, term, um, and my own are are cycling around soon. So, um, so thank you all for the commitment. It is quite a commitment to want to play this role and oversight of public education in the state of Connecticut, and your voices are representing your own perspectives and and those of the um organizations and communities uh and and people that you interact with. It brings a valuable, very valuable incentive to this board. So with that, I thank you, and we will move on. We will come back to the committee, to the Commissioners' report and move to our action items. Sitting with item seven A, the Chair will entertain a motion on the renewal of the state charter for Booker T. Washington Academy. There are motion?
Okay.
Thank you. It moved and properly so. Please join us at the table.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Board of Education. As the team here is getting ready, I just wanted to um kind of thank you all for the opportunity to be here and support this team. And one of my roles as Deputy Commissioner will be, as many of you know, is to oversee uh support for the charter schools. And I want to honor um the the work that has gone into this process. It's been quite impressive to me, not only the families, the students, and the the teachers and educators at Booker T. I had the opportunity to see their public hearing, engage, and what a wonderful, warm environment. They talked about safety. Certainly you felt that wraparound in their in their school, um, but also the team here at the State Department of Ed who conducted the the renewal process. Um, so I'm going to hand it over to them, but I just wanted to acknowledge the work that goes into this. As you all know, it is intensive um and in support of our schools across the state. So with that, I'll hand it off to our Chief Executive Director, Sarah Ivey-Brice.
Especially you. Team comes from Booker T. Um, so good morning, and thank you certainly to Commissioner Russell Tucker, Rehearsal Court, and Board Chair DeBois Walton and board members. In your packet for your consideration is the Booker T. Washington Charter School Renewal. And with me today to support its implementation is my colleague, Robert Kelly, our Program Manager for Charter Schools, as well as Adam Rodenberg, Middle School Principal, and Christina Ellington, Elevate Charter Schools Officer, as well as another. Okay, welcome now. Thank you. Um, and there are many other members in support of Booker T. and Elevate um in the audience that I've just. The um Connecticut State Department of Education received an application for renewal of September eighth, twenty twenty three, and at which time the CSD staff would convene a team to conduct an onsite visit to observe the practices aligned to the CSDE Charter School performance standards, which are outlined on page two in your packet. The CSD solicited written comments on the renewal from the Superintendent of New Haven Public Schools and from contiguous or bordering districts, which include East Haven, Camden, North Haven, Orange, West Haven, and Woodbridge. The CSD received a letter from the Superintendent of Woodbridge House of Schools and this letter in attachment A in your packet. They provided no reason or comment that reflects poorly on this school. The CSD also received no letters against the renewal of the school's charter. A public hearing was held in the city of New Haven on November twenty ninth, twenty twenty three, where over one hundred people attended. Twenty eight attendees spoke in favor of the renewal. No one spoke in opposition. I do want to recognize the students that were in attendance at the hearing. They were great ushers for all people attending, as well as I recognize we recognize that they stayed afterward to help clean up the auditorium. Word of change two for context is the history of the last renewal for Booker T. and the conditions in place at that time, which included a three-year renewal and the requirement to develop a corrective action plan to improve student achievement. So in summary, the department has determined overall Booker T. Washington Academy is providing its students and families and community with a high school public school option, and their hard work is recognized. However, there is focused work to be accomplished on the challenges that persist. And the department recommends that the State Board of Education renew the school's charter for a period of three years, with the condition to conduct a root cause analysis utilizing the the department's needs assessment toolkit to evaluate and revise the current corrective action plan that is in place to improve student academic achievement. In addition, Booker T. Washington Academy must submit a corrective action plan for bringing staff into certification compliant. We are confident that with a focus on this targeted improvement, rather than a very short renewal cycle, that Booker T.'s leadership team, with a focused monitoring and support of the department's charter office, will see improved student outcomes and improve recruitment policies and practices to ensure all staff are certified. It is further outlined that the Booker T. Washington Academy team will meet with the Accountability and Support Committee of the Board to provide progress a progress update in October of twenty twenty four. At this time, I do want to turn it over to the team that are present here from Booker T. Washington Academy to share any few highlights on these strategies that are already in place and what this renewal will afford the county.
Good morning. I'm the no-name person. I'm filling in for Reverend Seal. My name is Dave Morton. I'm the treasurer on Booker T. I'm for Booker T. Washington Academy, and I've had the um honor of serving for several years. Um, and I'm going to let the team speak to more of what what we request in terms of academic performance. I'll just share a little bit about what drew me to the school. Um, so I had the chance that we had to go to meet leadership and really see how it felt different than my own experience and the experience I've seen from my children in school. Um, the the commitment to the scholars, the love that I could feel um at at the time leader at the time was John Taylor, not when we were in the middle of a meeting, he stepped out to to connect, to say hello to each student scholar, and they were excited to see him. Um, and that really stuck with me. And what I have actually learned over the years or have seen is um it's not just an individual leader, it's this community that has really stepped up. We've already heard from members today, and you'll get a chance to hear more, but it's it's the it's the students, it's the scholars, it's the parents, it's the the teachers, the support staff, uh, the we have the light lift that the board members, the school leaders. Um, and and I'm actually going to hand it off to one of those leaders now, Adam Rosenberg, to to give a little more context on some of the academic performance. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Adam Rosenberg, Principal of Booker T. Washington Academy Middle School. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Board of Education. At BTWA, we have a commitment to providing a safe, nurturing, and challenging learning environment with the aim of producing responsible and productive citizens prepared to successfully compete in the global market. Working towards this mission, we have created a school to push our scholars to become the best versions of themselves academically and socially. As Principal of Booker T. Washington Academy Middle School, I'm particularly proud of the progress the school has made. Some areas I'd like to highlight are our academic progress, particularly our S-Back results, where overall data is trending upward and is outperforming the local district in all areas. For BTWA exceeded the state percentage of students at or above proficiency. All students in grade five mathematics and grade eight ALA and our performance index for. And our performance index for Latin Hispanic students as well for, as well as for all high need students outperformed the state in both A L A and M A. Additionally, due to the implementation of the science of reading, we've had a decrease in percentage of scholars needing extensive support in foundational reading skills from the year time period, spring 2022 to spring 2022, increased kindergarten, first grade, from a decrease from forty-eight percent to thirty-three percent. Another highlight is our continued work on our teacher talent development, which includes five weeks of summer professional learning for leadership, new teachers, and returning teachers. Clear data protocols, including lesson study and response to data as part of teachers' weekly monthly structure, and strengthening our professional learning offerings and structures through evaluations, gathering input from teachers on what they need for P D. committee. Other progress has been made in our students' experience as we implemented a whole school positive reinforcement system, supported positive culture in classrooms. And our chronic absentee data has been trending downward and remains below the local district. Lastly, I'd like to mention and celebrate that this June we will graduate our third eighth grade class. Through Booker T. Washington Academy, continue to look ahead to improve and refine our practices, programs, and scholar experience. Our scholars deserve nothing less as they strive to elevate themselves, their community, and humanity. Thank you.
Good morning, all. I am Christine Ellington, Chief Schools Officer. I have the wonderful, wonderful opportunity of working with our leaders at our Booker T. Washington Schools, our principals and assistant principals. And it truly has been a gift to work with such dedicated individuals. Whether it's ten o'clock at night over text messages or on Zoom calls, we're always reflecting to make sure that our scholars and our, our staff members are getting what they need. And in general, you know, I joined Elevate approximately six months ago. But in my experience in working with charter schools over the last decade and even more than that, I've just been so impressed and so proud of the progress that Booker T. Washington Schools have made, how reflective we are and how serious we take it when it comes to our student outcomes and making sure that this is the best place that scholars can be. So I'm here also to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Thank you to the department for your work on, on presenting, reviewing and presenting its recommendations to us. And thank you to the Booker T. School community for your public comment and for certainly being with us today. We have a full report in front of us as board members, so we've had an opportunity to review that and your comments add some context to it. The one thing I would like, if you could, is, is there more we should know about the educator certification finding? Anything you want to update us on around plans and progress there? Anything more we should understand?
Yes, I believe in the report, it showed that earlier January that we had eight teachers uncertified, and really proud to say that we're currently at four. So we've been actively making moves, making sure that there are protocols and principles in place to uphold that standard for all of our teachers. We work with all of our teachers individually, and we plan over the next couple of months to get that down even lower.
Board members, additional questions? Yes, Mr. Bojan.
Question really is to the staff. Even the time period that this, the, the, what was going on in schools, presence, pandemic disruption, I'm surprised by a three-year round for five years. You had an explanation of that.
Thank you, Mr. Teale, for the question. I would say to you that a school that receives a five scores high in every function. And while I think you're, it's important to make reference to the student performance in relation to the pandemic, we, we, we uphold that, that high standard regardless of the, 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 the pandemic. We look forward to this school. We take, we take note of the school's increase in student performance from 2021, 22, to 22, 23, as an important step in their continued growth forward. And that's what we look forward to, and that's what we count on the administrators here to ensure.
Increase, and I'd like to take a moment to recognize our commissioner has joined us. Not sure if there's anything you wanted to add on this item. All right. Seeing nothing further, all in favor of the recommendation on the renewal of the state charter for Booker T. Washington Academy? Please do so by the sign of aye. Any opposed? Wonderful motion carries. Congratulations. Carry on. We look forward to hearing more and progress. Item seven B, his approval of the new educator preparation program at Penn State University, Master of Arts in Teaching, initial degree, grade seven to twelve. The chair will entertain a motion on the item. Your second? Thank you. We welcome you to the table for presentation.
Good morning, gentlemen and the State Board of Education members. Penn State University submitted a new program proposal to offer a Master of Arts in Teaching program, leading to certification in a critical shortage area of the 3, grade seven. This program will be in new track when we have already approved Master of Arts in Teaching programs in secondary education. I have here with me today Christina Toddler, the Director of Master of Arts in Teaching, Anna Brady, Associate Dean, and Marianne Sparago, Assistant Dean of Penn State University, who are happy to answer any questions that you may have about this important new program, which will address the shortage of secondary science teachers in Connecticut.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair and the members of the board. I just wanted to share briefly that we would be so excited to be able to offer this opportunity, not only because right now chemistry is one of our critical shortage areas in state Connecticut, but also because we've received a lot of interest in recent years from students coming up, your Penn State University undergraduate, and our colleagues in health sciences and chemistry department, who reach out to us and say, you know, we have students who are coming through chemistry majors. They thought they wanted to do chemistry research. They love chemistry. They think they might want to go into teaching. And we have to say, I'm so sorry. We cannot offer them that opportunity. Perhaps they could go into biology and cross endorse some day chemistry. Well, those are very different chapters. So rather than turn people away, we currently have, I think, at least four that we know undergraduates who are interested in chemistry track. This is a really great time for us, not only to open up, to offer that opportunity, but also because we are just starting data collection for our next K. of preparation cycle. So if this program were to be approved now, that would set us up to be able to bring new students in, prepare them to be chemistry teachers, and fold that into our data collection process in time for our 2027 self-study report. So we're prepared today to answer any questions that you might have about our proposal to add this track on to our, using the N E T. certification program.
Thank you so much and for highlighting the high need area that we, that you're seeking to address here. Are there any questions? Any not? Are you the vote on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I will abstain. I'll, I will abstain. I am, I'll stay up at Penn State University. That's what the sidebar adds.
Hold on. Appreciate that. Go home and do sleep again. That's a good reason. All right. Thank you. Congratulations. Fourth and the chemistry teachers for us.
Can you do that with the armory? That's still me.
All right. Thank you. We'll move to item seven C, the report on the agricultural science and technology education graduates five years after graduation. Is there a motion on this matter?
Second.
Thank you. Move it properly seconded. Right, presenters to the table.
Commissioner Russell Tucker, Chair Devois Walton, and board members. We are excited to share this update, this report on our technical science and education graduates five years after graduation. With me this morning is my colleague, Carol Macken, Education Consultant for the department, and a very special guest, Robert S. L. B., who is currently a student in the UConn College of Agriculture, Health, and Natural Resources, representing all graduates of regional agricultural, agricultural science and technology education. Before you is the annual report for the graduating class of 2017. And we are truly excited to be able to present this report in February because February is also National Career and Technical Education Month. And National FFA Week begins on Saturday, February seventeenth, through following Saturday. The last five-year report came before you on January eleventh, 2023, for the graduating class of 2017. The purpose of this annual report is to provide you, State Board of Education, with the results of an annual study of the educational and vocational activity graduates have been engaged in in five years after graduation. The executive summary provides the findings of this study for your review, and conclusions are provided on page three of this report. I do want to bring your attention to the table on page six, which highlights the employers and the job titles of those that responded to the survey. You will notice the many agricultural-related positions held by our graduates, with two that are now agricultural teachers in two Connecticut high schools. At this time, I will ask Mr. Macken to introduce our special guest, Robert S. L. B.
Robert S. L. B. has said he's a graduate in the Regional School District, number seven, Northern Christian High School, in the town of Larchmont. That is the town which, oh, but Robbie decided to join the agriculture department. He's our former state FFA president and a national FFA officer candidate. He's currently at Junior University of Connecticut studying horticulture. So from there, I'll let Robbie talk a little bit about his experiences in, in the agricultural science and technology education program.
Thank you, Mr. Macken. Thank you, Ms. Parisi. Agriculture education changed my life. When I went from middle school to high school, I was going to be a physicist until I discovered ag, and I discovered that I really did not like math that much. And throughout the program, my first year is just exploratory. You get a little sampling of each class to decide what you like. And I determined that I liked plants. I liked working with plants. I liked working with people with plants, and I loved always learning more. So throughout my years in high school, I focused on plant science. I focused on greenhouse technology and operations, and that led me to where I am today, a junior at the University of Connecticut majoring in horticulture. Now, what do I plan to do afterwards? After I finish my undergraduate education, I plan on pursuing my PhD and becoming a college professor of horticulture. Now, what's important about agriculture education is, yes, many of these graduates go into agricultural careers, which is vital in this day and age when more and more people are on the, on this planet and less and less farmers. But it also produces people that go into education, that go into nursing, that go into careers that aren't necessarily agriculturally related. But the skills learned in agriculture education can be applied there. So through agriculture education and through my participation in the youth organization FFA, I gained skills in leadership. I gained skills in public speaking. I gained skills in working with people, some easy to deal with, some not so easy to deal with at times. But overall, all of these things have taught me how to be a productive member of society so that I can better the future of not just agriculture, but also the state of Connecticut as well as the United States. Thank you.
We are here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for the presentation. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Rick.
Robbie, thank you so much for coming down today and visiting with us about what, what your agricultural experience meant with, with agri-science. I guess I have one question to, to kind of feedback. You talked about the fact that, that careers in agriculture are absolutely critical. I guess I'm going to lean in on the fact that food insecurity is huge in our state, is huge in our region. Climate change, climate resilience is just a tremendous, tremendous, you know, field that we have to answer with agriculture. As you start talking with young people that are looking to, to take a, you know, an exploratory, you know, look at what, what does, what does the future hold as it deals with plants, animals, food, technology? How, how are we bringing more young people in from, from, you know, the younger grades to show them what they can do with agri-science? And I know that we're at capacity in a number of our, a number of our schools. How, how, what are the next steps we need to take to make sure we can fill the workforce that needs to get into climate, that needs to get into food, and needs to get into technology to make sure that, that we can sustain?
So thank you for the question. As far as how to address these shortages in agriculture, it is vital that we continue funding and supporting agriculture education in Connecticut and across the country and even around the world. In America, less than two percent of people are farmers, which is terrifying when you think about the several million, billion people that are in the U.S. and around the world. These two percent of people are left to feed everybody. So as we expand agriculture education programs and we're able to bring more kids into agriculture education and, you know, spur that interest that I got spurred into from middle into high school, that is how we can start addressing some of these food insecurity, some of these climate issues. Because once they get into ag education, a lot of them like to stick with it. And even me and my, my current path of horticulture up at the University of Connecticut, I'm actually working with professors now that are doing work with breeding different crops. For Professor Mark Frand in particular, he bred a variety of Japanese barberry that's no longer invasive. So we're constantly taking steps towards a better planet, a better earth, more food insecurity. But the main way to do that is continuing to support agriculture education so that these schools have what they need to get students like me, who weren't necessarily agriculturally related before, into ag education.
Other questions?
So thank you, Robert, for being here this morning. As I was reviewing the report that comes to this board every year, I decided it was time to bring the report to life. And so thank you for being here today, just to share your experience around this so that for the board, it is taking the report, but understanding the impact from hearing through the voice of a student in the program. So that went through the program. So thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other questions or comments, we all add to the commissioner's voice and thank you for joining us here today. All those in favor of the report on agricultural science and technology education graduates five years after graduation? Please do so by a sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Bojan Carries? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And item seven D, adoption of the Connecticut Leader and Education, Leader and Educator Evaluation and Support Plans 2024. The chair wants to hear a motion on adoption. I guess. Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded and heard at committee.
Apologies, could you?
Mr. Taylor and Ms. E. And this item was heard at the Legislation and Policy Development Committee meeting. So with the engagement, I'll have our chair back as well.
Morning, and thank you to the Legislation and Policy Development Committee for meeting with us this morning. I just wanted to first recognize we have a few members of the Educator Evaluation and Support Council in the audience.
Just raise your hands.
And Erin Benham also was a part of that process. We are. We are very pleased to present to you this model state of state model plan representing what each of the council members have come to consensus upon. I echo the comments that you heard earlier and the comments from several of our ES council members. This effort is almost three years in the making. It reflects trust, collaboration, cooperation, and consensus. We truly believe that this model is what our districts want. It provides opportunities for growth, support, feedback, and also innovation. So I thank you for considering adopting this model and thank you for your your support.
Thank you. Do you want to add anything?
I'll just add. I'll just add that. Okay. I'll just add that we did have a nice conversation in the committee this morning. We presented well, highly supported, I think was reflected in sort of the lack of questions, even that thing. But one of the things that we did talk about was an interest in in the structure of sort of the continuous improvement to sort of ensure a process that be a little bit more formal and its way of collecting and addressing any feedback from the districts, the stakeholders. So that was sort of an addition and apart from itself, but just wanted to bring that forward as I think it was an conversation we had this morning.
Thank you for that feedback. I do also want to acknowledge that the Educator Evaluation and Support Council, which is statued as the Performance Evaluation Advisory Council, or very known as PEAK, the council will continue to meet beyond this, hopefully, adoption of the plan. We have training and technical assistance to be rolled out throughout the year to support the implementation in districts. So the council will continue to meet, and I think what you just shared in terms of having the council develop a more formal structure for feedback is very important.
I have no problem with any of this, but I do have a question. Could you articulate a little more with if individual compliance to collaboration, trust, and needs operationally, that one?
Yes, I'm glad to. Thank you. So again, what we currently have in place, the evaluation and support process begins with goal setting. So currently, individuals develop their own goal with their evaluator, and it's typically regarding a milestone of some sort. For example, if I'm a teacher, I would say my goal might be that 85% of my students will reach, you know, X by the end of the school year. We are still having goal setting, but it revolves more around professional learning, individual growth, and ultimately contact on students. There's opportunities for educators and leaders to collaborate. We believe that there is power in collaboration among colleagues. So it's moving away from individual targets to more collaborative targets, more growth and more impact on on students.
Measured through student scores.
They.
Systems or?
Yes, measured, but it's through multiple indicators of student learning, growth, and development. So that that opens the opportunities to focus on the whole child, to focus on social and emotional learning, and to focus on on true growth.
Thank you so much for your presentation, and importantly, thank you for the work that that you have supported and led and the work of this council that has spanned a period of time here to do a real model of what it looks like to work collaboratively to come to consensus and bring forward a really quality product, is more easily approved the standards and guidelines. Now, this is the plan, the long-awaited plan document that districts are waiting for in order to either completely adopt or to to adapt their plan as long as it remains and applies with this. So certainly want to thank thank you. And as as a board board member, we were well represented by Vice Chair Benham, and I want to certainly thank Vice Chair Benham. And was there if you wanted anything before I bring the final comment?
I would like to just comment, and I certainly echo all the comments that were made previously in public participation. I also want to make definitely send a great thanks to Sharon and Shawana for this great work. As she said, this is almost three years in the making now that the council started, and it is truly a model. Not only are we approving a model today, it's a model of working together collaboratively and the trust that is needed to do all these kind of educator initiatives. So I greatly thank the staff for all their hard work over the years.
Commissioner.
Don, thank you very much. Also wanted to add my voice appreciation to the council. All these organizations getting together like any process, but it requires a lot of back and forth, and they work through it to get to this point. And a key piece of information is that the work is not completed. It's not like we've now done the guidelines. We have the model. Let's check the box and move on. Implementation matters. And so the council will be certainly working together to make sure that we're tracking how are things going, understanding implementation, and whether we need to make any changes as we continue to move forward. So I think I just want to appreciate them, appreciate the staff for all their hard work. I know Dr. Tucker isn't here today. Our Deputy Deputy Commissioner came in and kind of jumped in as well in this space. So just really want to appreciate the work, and it is really really collaboration at its best, because this is what it takes to get to where we need to be. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. With that, see no other comments or questions? All in favor of adoption of the Connecticut Leader and Educator Evaluation and Support Plans 2024, so by the side of eye?
Eye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Good work, and we look forward to hearing more about the rollout. I'm not aware of any financial matters to come before the board. Oh, I'm sorry. I am aware of a financial. Financial matters.
So thank you. We wanted to just take a few minutes of our time today to do a high-level overview of the budget that was just the budget. I figured you may have questions on that, and also to update you around ESSER investments and what has happened in that space. And I see indeed is here, and it's indeed. So just so you know, and my appreciation to indeed as well, because when Kathy comes to the Marcha Cat, we just taken on the state director role of our ESSER plan and the work that goes along with that and also looking at issues as well. So we're going to do a high-level overview of where we are and take it from here. Ajay?
Please put the slide down. Keep going with my tree, maybe. All right, I'll get started. Could we just go to slide two? We can't get the.
What are you?
No worries.
Let me get into slide code, right?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Going up on a different screen or something?
That's what I'm wondering. There we go. Sorry.
Okay. No problem. Thank you. Glad to have this up. So I have really three slides. The first slide is around the governor's budget that was released last week, and I'm just going to give a few highlights from that budget. And what I have on the slide are the FY 2024 estimated dollars, which are the current year dollars that were in the budget, and what is the adjusted amounts for FY 2025, along with a brief description of what's what's the rationale for it. So the first item is ECS, and as you can tell, the amount for FY 2025 is being increased. It's being increased to fully fund the acceleration of the ECS formula phase in, which will happen by FY 2026. This increase also will allow us to hold, apply that hold partless rule for certain districts, and it also accounts for adjustment to enrollment, especially with increases in students eligible for pre-reduced pricing. When it comes to charter schools, there's also an increase there to fund the per-people increase that was passed in the legislative session last year and to adjust for current enrollment. For magnet schools and open choice, there's an increase of per-people funding by 3% and adjustments to reflect the current enrollment standard. And for the VOAI programs that we just heard, we support the VOAI courses, it fully funds at the current statutory amount. So that's what you see there. But in addition to those of those pre-existing amounts, there are some enhancements in this budget. One is, we know from our attendance work that the LEAP program is producing results. So this budget actually allocates $7 million to continue that program to improve attendance in the state budget. There is also allocation of $5.6 million to from the state budget for school meals, and this allows us to continue universal free breakfasts and provide subsidy for reduced price meals. There is an additional $5.6 million in the ARPA funds, which are the American Recipe Plan Act funds, which are appropriated by the legislature. So the governor's budget makes a commitment there as well for an additional 5.6. And using the ARPA funds, the second bullet point is providing funding for the Science of Reading Masterclass. So an additional $3.5 million to ARPA are allocated for that purpose. So again, there's a lot more, but this is a high-level overview of the governor's budget as a virgin education.
Is a question?
So thank you. Thank you for this. First of all, my question is, what's going to happen to school meals when ARPA goes away? Will that number go back down? Are we seeing, do I have acid? Or or can anybody address that? Because I am concerned that if it goes back down, when families are used to having that that opportunity, if we are not planning ahead for it.
I see John President, I walked in the room, and also Robin, so you can probably join the table. But what we're sharing with you, so this was last year, there was an appropriation for that, and now it's in the budget. So we're pleased to see that it's everywhere, and I'm sure that will be continued conversation of what it looks like going forward. But John, I don't know if there's anything going on at the federal level around this funded, because this has been a nationwide initiative across many states, in states putting resources into our education program.
And so, so thanks for sure. So the $11.2 million is actually our estimated cost for the year to cover the full cost of school practices for all students and lunches for students who are eligible for reduced-priced meals. Reduced-priced meals are partially subsidized by the federal government and partially subsidized for the family. So this eliminates that. Originally, they were $16 million funded for that. This is our estimate, and it's in the governor's budget is the estimate. I'll be toward. On the federal level, you've heard of the community eligibility provision in which districts have a certain percentage of students eligible for free meals. And opt into that, their requirements are that they have to serve all meals to students, all students for free all the time, both breakfast and lunch. So they've lowered the threshold for eligibility for that from 40% of your student population to 25% of your student population. Not sure about changes to what we refer to as the multiplier. So if 40%, you multiply that times the federal multiplier, which is 1.6, that gets you about 80% of the meals that are served are reimbursed at the highest rates of full rate. The magic number is 62.5%. If 62.5% of your students are eligible for free meals, you get reimbursed at all of your meals, 100% of your meals at the free rate. At 25% without a change in the multiplier, now you're talking about really getting reimbursed at the highest rate at about 40%. So the district has to come up with the rest of the funds to cover the cost of those free meals that are required under them.
I again, just because I do follow a lot of the public policy around what's happening with with food insecurity and the harm of things, and we see challenges certainly ahead for that, but certainly hope that that we take a really hard look at how we're going to backfill and move that all the money if we don't see any kind of a compromise or opportunity to proceed the way we need in in the federal system.
So my understanding is that half of the $11.2 million is ARPA funding and half of the state grants to the gap.
Finding that is something we'll keep our eye on.
I think so. I mean, there's there's certainly plenty of of issues around state agencies that that, you know, as we look at what happens when ARPA goes away, and this the issue is too critical, you know, for us not to have some sort of a long-term plan if if the federal side of the shop can't bring the appropriate attention to this that it deserves. And I do have one question about about the agri-science funding, certainly hoping at some point we figure out how to get the increase per pupil. There's still a lot of schools that are very concerned that they're not meeting the the full the full needs that they have, just like we do with magnet and the open choice. Thank you.
Next slide.
I'm just curious about the the LEAP column. Were we not doing home visits in those last year? I see a zero.
It just means that in the original biennial budget, it was not as an item, and in the adjustment for the next fiscal year, it is being as an item.
It's a separate item, not that not that there were no visits.
That's correct. LEAP was funded through COVID relief funds, and what this is actually showing is that when you have an evaluation and you can show what works, that we can make an argument and a commitment for dedicated.
So we're really pleased to see that because this was the governor's gear funding that started this, about $10 million. The legislature added over the past couple of years another 14 million to that in ARPA funds, and now it's being proposed in the state's budget. I think that's a great kudo to the work that is happening here in this space. So we're really pleased to see this in the budget.
I was just going to ask, what percent increase will that $7 million allow? Or is that just at the current level of LEAP visits? That expansion, or is that just maintenance of the visits taking place? So thank you. So we're currently working with 14 districts that have been there since the beginning, and now we're looking at a sort of second round of using this funding to expand to another, probably another 10 districts. The other piece that this isn't showing is there have been over 100 trainings that we've done on the LEAP program. So LEAP is finding its way into others, over 30 other states. Many other districts are moving, taking our LEAP model and implementing that on their own, but this is this would be dedicated funding to expand to partially then more districts.
Are there other other questions on this?
Now you can look to your next slide.
Erin, did you have a question?
I didn't have a question, but I do want to add, I was just so thrilled to see this piece of LEAP. And John, I'm so glad you brought up the recognition across the country about this program, and we've seen that since it was initiated. Any questions about it? Certainly, I receive still many from NASB concerning it. So it just thrills me that the governor has recognized this great program and something that works and that will move forward being funded. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. If you can move forward in the presentation.
So the next two slides that I have have to do with our ESSER funding. These are also COVID relief funds, but these are the elementary, secondary school, emergency relief fund that comes directly to education. We're just going to give you an update on these two grants, ESSER two, and then the next slide gets into ARPA ESSER. I want you to start at the bottom of the table. So this was a full So this was a four hundred and forty-three million dollar formula grant. And we have a little over two million dollars still left with us sitting at S D E. The obligation deadline for districts was September thirtieth of twenty twenty three. Obligation means that the districts have to decide and commit to what they're gonna spend their money on. They have to like have a P O, have a contract, whatever, like have all that in place. That was the obligation deadline. Districts had to expend all their money, spend it by January twenty eighth of this year, so twenty twenty four. The feds gave an extension on the liquidation, meaning that they gave us a little more runway, fourteen more months to spend the money on previously committed obligations. So we got an extension till March twenty five for some districts, not all. So now I want you to work your way up from the bottom. The three districts in green, they're good to go. Their liquidation extension is approved by the feds. The districts in yellow, there are four districts in yellow that you see on the screen, and these balances are as of February fifth. The four districts in yellow, they didn't get their paperwork to us on in time for us to send to the feds. But we sort of asked the feds, pleaded with them, and they're letting us send an amendment request. And so those four districts are part of our amendment request to the feds. Now, the top five districts did not obligate their balances by September, February of twenty twenty three. It is too late to obligate those funds. Those funds will be going back to the U.S. Treasury. But as you can see, like we have two million dollars, which is roughly less than half a percent of the balance. So more than half of that are from the first three schools, the three achievement first schools, Bridgeport, achievement for Hartford, Elm City. With that, one million, over one point two million of those three schools accounts for more than fifty percent of our total balance. And all of that is going back to the U.S. Treasury.
What's the conversation with with those schools?
They were repeated, they were repeated conversations, um.
But what were you hearing that?
I I don't know. I'm looking at Irene.
I I'm just wondering what kind of barriers they they've expressed or?
And before Irene.
Capacity, like I'm just wondering what they would hear.
I just want you to know that we have been laser focused on these numbers. I've said it once, I've said it.
Not at all an indictment of the department.
No, no.
I'm really wondering what happened away from the district.
Yeah, so I just wanted to know that. And I know we've done over above and beyond what other states, my colleagues have talked to have done. And so Irene is here because I charged them literally with picking up the phone, calling, directing, not only about the top folks, but even the numbers, the the folks who needed to put in a request for liquidation uh with the feds. So maybe Irene, you can tell us a little bit of what you've heard.
Totally. And and it took enormous effort even to get the pay board to submit for a liquidation extension request. And those four in yellow are there because despite multiple efforts, we didn't get it. We had to keep calling, escalating multiple, multiple times to say, hey, you have a balance, you have a balance, you have a balance. You don't do anything. Have you obligated it? And we find that they've actually paid out these monies, but aren't requesting the funds from us. And if they don't, we can't even, if we don't have a liquidation uh extension, we can't even pay those yellow ones. But after multiple efforts, we got that. And these funds have a lot of flexibility and latitude in how you can spend them. So we just wanted to mention that too.
So multiple conversations, um, phone calls and emails with multiple people um were made for the five that are listed at the top. Um, a lot of conversations with the achievement first network that heads there. What was shared, it was an internal barrier specific to um change in leadership in the federal office. And so we did work with them closely, provide technical assistance to complete the required documentation. Um, to their credit, they said that they, because things were not obligated, it was very difficult for them to now obligate now. The work may have changed, and there was just nothing that they can do with with that. Um, so they had to make this tough decision to say we we cannot meet this deadline and provide the documentation. Um, Demokian Academy, they did request um an extension, but not for, it was for a different amount. And so they too, in working with their fiscal office, realizing that there was more money left to be obligated. Again, they just were not able to do that. Um, State for Charge School for Excellence, we we reached that multiple times. And there, no matter what we did, there was just no response. And and perhaps that that dollar amount of five thousand, you know, again, we did everything that we could and allow us anything to make sure it's spent.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes. Really quickly, um, given that this this energy was really key for me, that the money was not fully restricted. In those schools at the top especially, they have like a free lunch line item in their particular bodies where that money, that was the delta, could have been allocated to.
I would have to go back into their grant application. I don't have it committed to memory, I'm sorry. But I can go back into their their grant application to see that. We were very um clear in our, like you said, it was very open, be innovative, and address certain needs that you had identified. So, um, but.
So uh let me just uh bring this also back to uh what you all engaged with us on on these S R grants and the five investment priorities uh that was uh required districts for investing those resources. So it's anything about learning, acceleration, enrichment, all of that is about social, emotional, and mental health supports. Uh, it is about um uh have safe and healthy learning uh environments. So districts have used this for grades, for H VAC, uh the resources. So when as you talk about the flexibility, it's within the 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 five investment priorities that we set out as a part of this investment. But there's within that space flexibility in how these resources uh should be, could be spent.
So it always pains pains to see money go back um to to the federal. What i- is the money allocated in such a way that at any point when a school is not being responsive, that the money will, when other schools has to stay to the school, the school initially allocated?
So these these were done based on Title I allocations directly uh from the federal government, uh getting them out. And recall, at the the top of this as well, we had some districts that didn't meet the requirement for any resources at all. And we use some of our set aside funds uh to to provide to them. I know Ajita's asked this question now, especially when you see the next slide about where we need to go for our.
That's what I'm thinking about.
As to whether, so I know we're waiting. I I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, yeah, because if there is a way to reallocate after you're getting so close to a deadline and you still haven't gotten responsive, I'm sure the next list is gonna be longer.
Yeah.
Or time still to to allocate.
It's given that the economic volatility in this country, especially in um urban districts, it is just so costable to leave money on the table. Like I I just, sitting here.
Top of the list are all charter schools, but it was worth raising for me. The reason I asked it was there, is there a capacity issue? Is it that, you know, those schools have smaller resource devoted to fiscal? Um, and that's what, that's why I was sort of wondering what we're hearing back. And actually, one district, we did hear that it had to do with staffing and the and the change in leadership in the fiscal office. But I was wondering whether that was something about capacity that's different in in um traditional public school. Okay, well, we won't beat that one to death. We're obviously concerned um and wanna see what you're gonna tell us on the next slide about how we're gonna not give anything back.
Well, so let me first, let me first level this one. Start at the bottom line, bottom line is that this was a nine hundred and ninety-six million dollar formula grant to the districts, so almost a billion dollars to the districts. Uh, we still have four hundred and twenty-seven odd million, and this changes daily. So this is out of February fifth. Four hundred and twenty-seven million, which is almost forty-three percent of the grant, is still sitting with us. It's not out to them yet. They've all put out grant applications and plans around those five priority areas that the commissioner mentioned to us. The deadline for obligation is September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. So we've got eight months to go, less than eight months to go, right? So September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. If they don't commit their resources by that time, by commit, I mean, our contracts have P O's. They can't pay for their payroll after September thirtieth, twenty twenty four, their own staff. But they can have contracts with external entities. And that can, that's now in liquidation, but you've gotta commit to that by September thirtieth. So now is the time to make changes, to figure out, is that gonna happen? No, let's take that two million and move it over here. Now is the time to do that, right? So and they have to get all that done by September thirtieth, ideally a lot sooner than September thirtieth, so that uh uh chairperson, uh DuBois Walton, so we can actually say, and I I've asked the feds that question. If some districts say they can't deal with so much money, they need to give something back. What's, can we redistribute? Like, what's the rules? I don't know. We have to seek that clarification. But we've given you the ten districts with the largest grant balances. And that's not a percentage, it's just an amount. And you can look at those ten districts. Those ten districts uh account for more than two-thirds of the four hundred and twenty-seven million dollar balance. So those ten districts account for that. And those ten districts all have more than forty percent of their allocation still sitting with us. And this grant was given out in twenty twenty one, but just and we're in twenty twenty four. So you've got eight months to go, right? I mean, so the liquidation extension, they can come in for a liquidation extension. The feds have just opened that. We won't be applying for that till later in the year. But the liquidation, remember, is not for figuring out new uses of funds. It's to spend it for a longer window on stuff you've already decided how to spend, what to spend. So it's it's just giving you a longer timeframe. So.
The the plans that were submitted, do they include some benchmarks by which I, so that you could make some determination as to whether, it looks like a big number, but they're on target to spend down based upon what they have been allocated for? Or does the plan not allow you to make those sorts of assessments?
I I'm gonna have to defer to Irene on this. Um, so can you tell from the plans?
I can certainly speak to the top ten there. Um, as part of our focused monitoring of the Alliance districts, we always do monthly budget updates with them. And we do include our all of the S R relief funding as well into titles and perks to ensure that they are being judicious in their spending and expenditures. So we do give them percentages of throughout the year by which they should be at. And if they're not, then we have some other focused conversations about how to arrive at that percentage at that time, that point in the year.
So which of these are behind, yeah, your your, so your, it sounds like there's some assessment you've made about these um to have?
So I think if you're, I mean, the forty percent, forty percent, yes, that we would need to have those conversations.
Anything on forty percent?
Yes.
And and to keep in mind again, and so pulling some pieces together, we developed, thank you to Ajita and the team, something that I'd asked them to do, and they delivered on it, was an expenditure dashboard that is transparent and publicly available. That's where we pulled this report from. So we've been doing uh around working with our districts, our superintendents. So they they have an easy way of like getting online and just for themselves, see what's there with all our grants, what the balances are, so they can then talk to their business officials and and have really good conversations. So it is public, it's transparent. Uh, I've I see Patrice here from Cabe, I've shared, we've shared the list with with Cabe, have shared the list with CAPS, our S R advisors can be working. We've done a lot to make sure that we continue to to keep this front and center uh of everyone. There's a lot of budget conversations that's going on in our state right now. Uh, and I just wanna make sure, as I've said to them, I do not want a front page paper news article that says Connecticut is sending any of these resources back. Um, you know, I'm hearing that districts, they know where they are here and they know what they need to do. But we're just doing our level best at our end to keep it again, front and center for them. You may have a plan, you know, a plan that's approved, but things may be moving around you. So you may determine that, uh, we we're doing the same thing here. Some things we planned to do that just didn't materialize, and now we need to shift resources to something else. We want folks to actively engage in that at the local level as well uh so that we don't run into this problem uh as we keep on.
That that speaks to uh one of one of my questions, which is, what is the State Department's number looks like to me? So we know how much is remaining or are ready to spend. Um, and then I don't know that we, if you need to do a presentation on this every month, but an update on this included in our folder, the updated chart each month would be helpful. But what what would the percentage be for a State Department of Ed spend now?
I am not sure. Our total is around a hundred and ten million, because it's ten percent of the overall. And we have work to do too. So we're not um immune to this. We have this, we're doing the exact same conversation, which is what are all the obligations? Exactly. What's been spent down? Is that still thing, still gonna happen? If not, we shift, right? So we're we're doing the exact same thing.
Perfect. If you could add that row to this and then just have that in our in our platform every month. Any other questions on on this fiscal update? Yes, Mr. Taylor, here's his spinning.
Yeah, look, look, looking at this as I contemplate my real, my property tax bill in Hartford and see that Hartford and Bridgeport are very somehow even creeping, yeah, the the cities that are not doing efficient job, it's funny. Uh, unfortunately, the cities that need it the most and are fine. What are the restrictions on this money for moving in some way?
So uh we have the the S R investment priorities that we provided to the districts. Uh, they can use as the guardrail uh for the work they do. But there's a lot of flexibility even within those in terms of how they make local decisions. And just to be, just to to right size, and we're looking at some big numbers, but it doesn't mean the district doesn't have a plan, right? But that plan needs to be looked at consistently and tracking to see where we are and what is occurring. So shifts need to be made, that it can be made, and especially now as we're marching towards the obligation timeline. Because after that nine thirty twenty twenty four, those obligations that they must be made, if not, forget asking about liquidation, right? If you don't obligate, there's nothing to liquidate. So that's the work that we're doing right now. So I don't, the takeaway here, even on our dashboard, we mentioned, this doesn't mean there's not a plan. All right, but folks have to pay very close attention to those, so they can exactly do. They did, they developed their budgets a while ago. And so things might not have come to fruition, or things might have shifted, and you decided, well, you know, we had planned to do this, but we we're now looking at our student level data and we need to do something else. Uh, those are the kinds of active conversations that should be happening at the local level around this.
It could be a big ticket item uh in that, that once, once that contract is executed, that, you know, makes a difference, because this can be used for infrastructure things, somebody, right?
Yeah, they can use it for H VAC, yeah.
Big investment in there, system-wide H VAC, right? So there there could be explanation, uh, but we wanna keep our eye on it and uh make sure that the districts are getting the the information. So thank you for bringing this, Johns. I appreciate that and appreciate Ajita's double duty as a fiscal liaison on uh on on this particular report. Um, all right, so I know I'm gonna lose, all right. Thank you. I was just gonna ask if there's anything um that we're going to lose um, uh, Mr. Clemens at this point. But in terms of items on committee reports, items ten A, academic standards and assessment. The committee meeting scheduled for the third week was canceled due to snowfall. Um, but the next meeting will be held on March nineteen P M at nine thirty A M. That accountability and support? Oh, I'm sorry. Finance audit and budget. Sorry. I just stepped away for a minute and then I heard my name. So um accountable accountability and support will actually meet next Wednesday. Wonderful. And uh, thank you. I I mentioned earlier, but thank you for the work um on the Commissioners Network. Um, we've got us, got those in front of us for the your extension, uh, finance audit and budget.
Good morning. Um, I'm still waiting, but I I need to speak to Keith on, see what the update is on hiring and uh and see if we finally have someone in place. We have not met. Uh, remember, finance and audit meets quarterly. Our next meeting is due uh two weeks, February twenty ninth. And uh, so I should have a robust report next meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you. My decision.
Yeah, so we met this morning, basically already heard my report. So nothing else was discussed. It's a short, uh shortened meeting. And of course, our next meeting is uh just before this one, next month. Um, but just a foreshadowing that there, we've asked both Greenwich and Fairfield School Districts to come right before the full board and we do the large meeting around the racial imbalance. Potential racial imbalance that they both. Go with.
Or to during their update? Um don't leave me with a report of secrets. Uh NASB?
Yes, NASB is up and running for the new year, um I would encourage all board members as they see the webinar. Um offerings coming across um to join them if possible. Um and if you cannot join them, just so that you are aware, if you, it is an interest, because some of them, they they generally are about three o'clock in the afternoon. Um they are taped, so you can go on the site and obtain them to listen to them later. Um it is always, as I've mentioned before, it's always nice to hear them. Um and very often Connecticut is. Mentioned in their those webinars. I apologize if you hear background noise, uh my neighbor decided to do some home construction today, so I have drills behind me, so I apologize. Cause she's very quiet, except for today. Um CIRK, I'll just move on with CIRK, um you have your report in front of you um uh from CIRK, and that still is an ongoing. Um committee that um is doing a lot of work, especially with collaboration with the State Department. Um and if I may, I'd like to also give a um an update on Killingley. Um unfortunately, we have not had another hearing um since last reported at our uh last. Um January meeting, hearings were scheduled um by the inquiry panel for January seventeenth and again for February sixth. But both were postponed um. Due to Killingley changing council was one, um and also a pertinent witness um. That we were all, all parties are waiting to hear from, we had resigned from Killingley, so. Due to many of the scheduling changes and so forth, are we have now a set hearing date for March twenty sixth. Um and I think all this today will be meeting with um the other panel members to um also confirm a second meeting day. Um hearing day if needed, um so right now we are going to resume um with that witness on March twenty sixth. So I just wanted to update the board on that.
Thank you, um thank you for the continuing update, um obviously this is. Remains an item of concern for this board.
Yeah, I just have a question about the Killingley piece, uh given the. And here's of some of our board members um that I think are actually sitting on that committee for. Only hearings. Might that be impacted for March twenty sixth?
Uh we will be following up with our state, you recall for for this matter, um our representative out of the Attorney General's Office. Um we'll be following up with Jared on that. Uh complication.
Malia, we never thought we'd be sitting in March of twenty twenty four and still dealing with Killingley. Let's let's put it that way, um and let's hope um come March twenty twenty four, we end our impartial hearing. I'm not saying ending our relationship with Killingley, but hopefully um our impartial hearing comes to a pause.
Um before I come to Mr. Mr. Exley, I just wanted to offer the Commissioner an opportunity, if there's anything to mention on the. Ongoing support that the department has been providing to Killingley. To address the the concerns around what what students um the health supports.
Sure, and I'll have John, John President, I'll just quickly. Share with us, it's out of this area of the agency that staff is deployed. Uh to continue to help support uh the district, and we provided some resources, I believe.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, so they have been part of our behavioral pilot. Uh they were the seventh district added, um we provided them with some money, I think it's between a hundred and seventy and two hundred thousand dollars, they. They did hire a mental health director, my understanding is that person. Has left, as of last Friday, so I believe the superintendent is now has taken charge of. A lot of that work, which is concerning for us. Um we're working with the Child Health and Development Institute, who is working directly with them, our staff has been on in a couple of occasions to meet up in the district as well, so. They are a high touch district, uh and we continue to keep monitoring the work that they're doing.
Thank you, um I think Mr. Exley had a question and then Mr. Taylor.
Did the uh change in the majority? Or that the impact?
Uh there was an election in Killingley with some newborn members, a question, um by Chair, I'm not sure if you remember.
Your take?
Uh was whether that has had any impact?
I, nothing that's been shared with me directly, but it um since that changed, that is when the council um. Changed, they dismissed their present council. Um and was in search of a new one, and that caused a postponement. And there was a a conflict in interest with one um. One law group, law firm, and so that also caused another postponement, um but they now have counsel. Um and we were ready to go forward, uh and then the resignation of the pertinent with witness, um so. To honor her schedule, um we postponed again. We will be hearing from her, but she no longer is employed at Killingley.
Mr. Taylor?
And they dismissed Shipman, cause Shipman was their next council. There.
Yes.
They had that first.
That was a, that was a conflict, I don't know if Mike can weigh in on that, that was a conflict of interest with them, and they could not. So that caused the delay even further until they picked up their present one.
With respect to the questions, um the new majority of the Killingley board, uh they took off. They. Old board in uh December. Uh they have changed legal counsel, uh they did wait for more days for the January seventeenth. Hearing on a holiday weekend request continuance, we voted. Given the fact that although. The Attorney General's Office has tried to change counsel, waiting for the last minute to do so, we thought. Uh appropriately indeed is the the continuous hearing. Nonetheless, understandably, because they were retaining new counsel, it was uh granted. They now have two different attorneys. Um one that advising them on general matters, I I guess. Uh which is Shipman Goodwin, uh the other one is an attorney out of uh Carney, Torrance. Uh so far, he's been. Very good to work with, and uh. He is looking forward to find to resolve this matter and on the all. So hopefully on March twenty sixth. And to Aaron noted, if will, we will have the witness that is, we've all been waiting to hear from, but which the day Killingley had presented. Uh she has resigned, she will however accommodate us on March twenty sixth. And hopefully, uh her testimony will. Allow us to wrap up the inquiry.
Thank you for that report, Vice Chair. Um we have remaining now our Commissioner and Agency update and items for discussion. Uh our item for discussion, so item um. Okay, so we'll do item eleven A. The item for discussion is the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three report on student discipline and Connecticut Public Schools.
Morning again. This is the uh annual report on student discipline that we provide to the State Board every year, required in state law. Uh I'd like to make the point of note that we've been providing this report to the State Board for many years prior to the change requirement in state law and. Uh the legislature then. Did it require, so we're we're glad to continue that, we can provide these updates. Uh John and I will basically be covering this. Uh I'll sort of speak to some data highlights, and then John will provide some programmatic reflections. We don't have a formal presentation, we have the full report. Uh after our brief piece, if you have any questions, we'll take those. Um what we saw from eighteen nineteen, which is the last sort of pre pandemic. Benchmark, if you will, to twenty two, twenty three, the year that ended uh in June. Uh we saw that the number and percentage of in school suspensions actually decreased significantly. Seven point five percent, but out of school suspensions and expulsions actually increased. Uh compared to those time frames, and we have. We've heard anecdotally from several districts about the challenges of students coming back. Uh in full time, in person schooling, after the pandemic. So this was not a surprise to us when we got the full data, we had heard that in fall of twenty three. Or in fall of twenty one as well, but definitely in fall of twenty two. Uh some categories, what we refer to as incident categories, or. Types of behavior, the loop into ten categories, if you will, ten buckets. We saw declines in incidents coded as school policy violation or sexually related behaviors or fighting and battery. But other categories showed substantial increases like drug, alcohol, tobacco, physical, verbal confrontation, weapons. We saw significant increases in those areas. In the drug, alcohol, tobacco bucket in particular, the number of incidents reported for marijuana possession or use. Saw a five time uh increase from two hundred and sixty one incidents in twenty one, twenty two. To almost thirteen hundred incidents in twenty two, twenty three. Uh incidents coded as um you know, as electronic nicotine delivery systems or ends. Commonly referred to as dates or e-cigarettes, those do comprise the big chunk of that bucket, over three thousand, three hundred. Um incidents in that bucket, so I know. Uh John and I have been discussing these trends and. Wanted to sort of offer his report.
Um so just a word about these school suspensions, first, so the law for Great Street as well, the law requires that all suspensions be in school suspensions. Unless uh the student poses significant danger to the community or or disrupts the educational process. Um and then the second possibility is if if previous disciplinary actions, suspension of officer parole, et cetera. Have not uh changed their student behavior, then an out of school suspension is utilized, but the default is always in school suspension, we did. Uh we are working with um a couple of large districts whose numbers were very, very low in the in school suspensions, and we have some concerns. That they sort of abandon that process for out of school, and it has pared out in the in the data with the increase in out of school suspensions. So um some thoughts on the end, the nicotine products, uh the alcohol and cannabis use. It's important to note that the um it it's only legal for those twenty one age and over, but as we've seen. With uh with the ends products, we had the transition from from tobacco product to those vaping products. Uh and the legalization of marijuana in the. Production of of cannabis products in gummies and candies and things, it just brings it a little bit closer. To that school age population, so the students have have more access to it, so. Um we're working with the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, Department of Public Health, Mobile Health. Um to try to uh provide some education through nurses and others um on that, uh the dangers of all of those products. So that's uh some on going. Um with regard to weapons and um. In more violent behaviors that are occurring in schools, we are seeing uh more significant uh behaviors. In schools that that are, things that are happening in the community are now spilling in new school business, right, so. Uh there's violent violence is happening at an increased rate uh in the community, and we're seeing that that the fighting in what? School, a couple of stories, we had a seventeen year old student who brought a firearm to school and was arrested, and the police found. That they were two homicides that that fired, and she was. Um significant concern, we had a, just recently this year, we had twenty students who were expelled for gang related activities, bringing weapons to school and things like that. We're also seeing students who live near a school, but have to walk to school or bring knives to school for protection on the way to school. Uh but of course, they continue to have those. They're not, they don't appear to be using those knives, but you know, they fall out of a backpack with their phone. So these are things that that students are having to deal with, that seems to be spilling over into the school, which is which is part of the reason why the.
And by the way, I'm working from the executive summary of your report, so in case you're not following, we have a couple of more observations, and then we'll sort of open it up broadly for questions, if that's okay. Um we, another metric we track is something called the suspension rate. And this is an important one, which looks at what is the percentage of students in a school or district or the state. Who receive at least one suspension or expulsion, and the suspension can be an in school suspension or an out of suspension. And you know, as we saw prior to the pandemic, uh we see in twenty twenty three as well, the. About seven percent of our students, over thirty seven thousand students in our state, you know, we have close to five hundred thousand. Or a little over five hundred thousand students, about thirty seven thousand. Uh students are experiencing at least one suspension or expulsion, so that's kind of the overall number, if you will. So that's like roughly one out of fourteen, one out of every fourteen students. When you look at uh black or African American students. Um it is one out of seven. Who are receiving at least one suspension, for Hispanic students, it's one out of eleven, if you're talking about white students, it's one out of twenty three. So the disparities that have existed do exist, there are some slight reductions in those in those disparities. But the disparities do exist, and that pattern is not just in some districts. It actually exists in districts across the state, there are broad um patterns of these across the state. Um that we see. Uh this past year, we also saw uh increases in suspension rates, particularly in the middle school grades, so the six through eight grades, we saw actually. Uh perhaps our highest rates in those in those grades. And uh males generally get uh experience this at much greater rates, uh nine, almost nine percent. Of male, so you know, one out of eleven roughly, uh compared to like five percent. Uh so we use this suspension rate information to group districts into tiers, right, so we're not just. Uh glorifying a problem and not doing, I mean, so we have a whole tiering system where we. Use the suspension rate data, we look at districts that may have greater than fifteen percent suspension rate. We also look at districts where uh black or Hispanic students are getting suspended at two to three times the rate of their white peers. Not just in one year, but two years in a row, we want to see it sort of a a pattern, and with the pandemic. With these rates were lower and artificially lower, so we couldn't really refresh our tiers list. But after twenty two, twenty three, we weren't able to refresh our tier list, and that list, updated list is in the report as well. Uh from the appendix, so you you'll actually see uh districts in tier one, tier two, and then tier three and tier four are are. Uh high disproportionality or high suspension rate. For tiers, so I know, John, your office or defensively the districts are.
So uh thanks, Ajit, so yeah, so we will, the tier three, four um are are our focus area. Uh because of the digital port analogy, and the overall use of excluding this one, so we will be inviting uh those. Districts who participate in the community practice, um we also have a uh. Series, a training series that we've been working with um with CIRK to provide things on that evidence based practice guide. Uh systems of support, it's focusing on use of discipline. Um and an equity series program to address some of the disproportionate, so um we will be working with all of the districts and all of the tiers, um but those are.
The last uh area that we want to sort of highlight and then open it up for questions is um the pre K through two area, and John, I know you you made reference to that in your opening remarks. Um this is where there are restrictions um on out of school suspensions, so the statute actually prohibits. Uh out of school suspension or expulsion of students in these grades, unless the incident is of a violent. Or sexual nature that endangers others, so that's kind of the the language in statute, and we have seen. Even before the statute, but definitely after the statute in twenty fifteen. I think it was twenty fifteen, like steady declines every year in this uh in the, along this student population, so. Approximately, a little fewer than eight hundred students in pre K through two, that's approximately one half of one percent. Uh or less than um one half of one percent received this. Um receive at least one suspension, so we kind of monitor that. Age group closely as well, and I want to acknowledge Kim Traverso, who's here, who works closely with. Uh Corinne Felder in my office to sort of track this on a on a more real time basis and really intervene and support. Districts identify what are the underlying behaviors that might be happening, how is the district interpreting those behaviors? And then why is that leading to out of school suspension? In John?
So this is a, this is a focus area um for the department, has been and going forward, um the Commissioner. Uh School Discipline Collaborative is heavily focused on this, we're looking specifically at those behaviors, looking at um. Because the statute requires that the act be of a violent and sexual nature, we're taking a look at. because the statute requires that the act be of a violent and sexual nature, we're taking a look at what that means to districts. So we just issued a survey to forty districts who had high numbers in those areas for them to identify specific instances. Identify specific instances with specific students. What, what were the uh behaviors and, and adult actions around those behaviors that led them to believe that that should be an out-of-school suspension? So with that data, we'll be able to say, it's not just a numbers game, right? We'll be able to say, this is what happened, this is what the student did, this is what the adult is. And, and then we can tease that out. Did that, do we believe? Can we revisit the conversation around, did that rise to the level of a sexual or violent behavior? Did it really? Or was there some other way to do that? And that will enable us to structure our professional development, we work with districts on how adult actions can be different to reduce the number of out-of-school suspensions. So that, that uh is a lot of work uh going forward and we're going to use the results of that survey that Ajit uh and our team look together.
And I know the report gets into a lot of the work of your area. I don't know if you, uh, like all the trainings and supports and professional development.
Yeah, um, yeah, there's, there's, a lot of it is in the report, um, a lot of high-tech districts and a lot of day-to-day work with districts. Like I mentioned, one district who uh numbers of in-school suspension were strangely low, we're working correctly with their team. They have a new team of administrators uh working with their teachers to reinstate and retrain their building principles around the use of in-school suspensions instead of out-of-school suspension. Uh, a lot of uh trainings with their partners, a lot of work around school climate, you know, there was changes to the law with regard to school climate in both twenty-four and going forward to twenty-five. We're using the, those laws to provide school climate trainings in districts. And, and sort of this isn't just don't suspend, right? This is how do we develop climates and environments in schools that are conducive to students uh feeling welcome, feeling valued, being part of a community, uh, using the, all of the investments that they have done and that we're doing in social, emotional, mentally behavioral health, uh, right, to create environments where students are nice to each other.
Thank you for this um presentation and opportunity to review this report um annually every year. Laura, remember to raise some questions.
So I guess my question would be, given that you've identified that there are a number of students hate who may feel it's unsafe to even walk to school, are we able to correlate that to absenteeism in any way?
Commissioner's chomping at the bit.
It's not a planted question.
So yes, if we know that, right? So schools have policies uh about transportation where if you live in a certain proximity to the school, they don't provide uh transportation. We are, we are noticing uh certainly those students uh who physically feel unsafe. I mean, we have, there are stories of, you know, students being harmed, one story of a student being killed. Um, but it's, but that certainly contributes to absenteeism as well. And so one of, one of the things that we're doing, we're actually onboarding a new staff person to assist with the school safety issue and we're working with the Department of Learning and Services and Public Protection, who as you know, are the recipients of the schools, every school district has to do a full safety and security plan. So how are we using those plans and how are, we're supporting school districts in using the teams that are required to develop those plans, most of whom are in the community to support the school, not just the school, but the school community, they give all students no matter where they come from.
I'm not to, uh, I'm gonna jump in, but uh you ask a great question. Uh, and it's certainly, certainly when we think about the issue of attendance, these are all the interplay, the things that districts are dealing with almost on a daily basis. And that's why when we celebrate a reduction in, in chronic absence in a, in a district, uh, in a, in a school, that we really take it seriously because we recognize what it takes. And so I, we just, we went to the governor and visited a, a school and those were some of the questions, the, the, the concerns that were raised. So in a situation where the student is a walker and not feeling safe, the school district is working with volunteer organizations to provide transportation. That may be one student amongst everything else that they're working on. So this lost instructional time, the, the issue of suspension, expulsion, all of that really plays uh into what we're talking about as supporting not only our districts, but supporting families. And the role of communities is in a part of that, that work, which is really so important. But it is challenging work. Uh, and kudos to our districts that really continue to pluck away at this uh to work on it. And certainly there's more work to be done and that's why we're also making sure that we're laser-focused, providing that support as well.
Yeah, I'm hopeful in being able to uh see the trends um in percentages of things, but I'm having a hard time getting my head around um whether we see more schools moving from one tier to another. So are we, are we seeing from this as a um, when we look at our districts as a whole, are more schools moving um from a higher suspension rate tier to a lower one? Um, are you, are you able to make any system-wide assessments though?
Uh, good question. We looked at districts in when we did the tiering in twenty eighteen, nineteen, which was based on data from seventeen, eighteen, and eighteen. To the tiers we had now, which is based on twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, I don't have the exact numbers, but there were districts that were identified previously that are also in the bucket now, but there, I think there are some new districts that have crept into the mix um as well. Um, so it's hard, it's, you know, it takes time to change these practices. And with the overall rates generally increasing this go-around, this in twenty-two, twenty-three, um, we're not necessarily seeing like the same number of districts are there and many of the districts that were there before are also showing up, but I don't have the exact numbers in front, um, in my head. On the out-of, on the suspension related, the attendance, I just wanted to mention that when a student, and this is part of our policy that was adopted in twenty-two, if a student is experiencing an out-of-school suspension or an expulsion, they're pretty much absent unless the district provides an alternative education program and the student is present at that alternative education program at least half a day. So even if there is a reason to suspend the kid out of school, there is still an, there's still an encouragement to try to keep the student connected with learning as much as possible and have them get credit for attendance, but um, easier said than done.
No, I'm uh disappointing, I guess, is the best way to describe what I'm feeling right now. As I reflecting on two points, and I don't expect you to have answers, because I I've been in education all of my adult life. I don't have answers. But I hear your report and talk about the suspensions and or expulsions for uh the use of tobacco, marijuana, how it is spiked five times. Is that in any way synonymous with the legalizing of uh marijuana in our state? I'll have to answer.
Well, I will say that we did, we just started to track it in twenty-two.
The, the, the other, the other thing, I, I reflect back to your previous report, Ajit, and all of the unspent monies that are out there. Uh, and especially in the districts that are primarily or majority people of color. And uh, and then I hear that in your report that they, the people, persons of color are the most disciplined I guess, is that the right word? Yeah. Uh, group of students. And then you move to Hispanics and then you move to white. Uh, you know, all this money that's sitting out there, the districts are not spending. And, you know, we're getting the same old results. And, and I know people all around are working hard. I, I just, I'm just um disappointed, discouraged, yes, but not gonna let that break me down. I had to say that. Sorry.
I, I had the same reaction to that unspent money, especially Hartford taxpayer. You know, parent now, two students in the Hartford school system. At sixteen million dollars, I think, ninety-eight, fifteen percent of the are in danger of losing some suspension by what money?
Or a lot? Yeah, yeah, they are. If they, it all comes down to whether they obligate their funds by September thirty.
So probably makes sense for me, Hartford taxpayer, active Hartford citizen. All of them, and make sure that he's on top of this. And have you had any trouble working with people from Hartford? What, what can you possibly explain that? It's not.
Um, I, I don't think there's one solution for these, these questions. As you can tell, they're not alone. The districts, no.
But they're way up on top.
I think what was uh helpful to hear in that, that previous presentation um is the attention that's being paid to it from the department and that there is such an open line of communication and continuous follow-up. Um, putting that number in front of the district, making sure that they're working their plan. Um, and I, I think anything that you do on your, on your own time to bring that point home, be supportive of what the, what the department is doing. Um, thank you again for this report on, on school discipline, student discipline. Uh, Mr. Harris, I certainly um can understand the emotion. I think there are so many things that are coming to the board that um, that, you know, are, leave us wrestling with glaring disparities and inequalities that put us in that place of of feeling very frustrated, as you just expressed. Um, and it's why it's so important that we have department and a team that is um, that's that prior to being required to do something was already focused on uh reporting and reporting this uh on this and supporting districts in making some progress. Um, and then certainly is an area that it's important to have uh interest in, in shining light on and figuring out what are the positive supports are important for, for districts. So thank you for that. And I'm going to turn the floor back to our commissioner, who has the report of the commissioner and agent update.
So thank you very much. And I really just want to thank the team around this. Uh, Kim Traverso is here doing this work and Harris is here on what, what it is. It is that those concerns that really spur us to action uh for us to be laser-focused on this work. Uh, how many years ago we had the school discipline collaborative because it was necessary to bring all voices to the table. Uh, when, when I did that, we formed a collaborative, which is now in statute, uh, you know, so this past session, uh, our school discipline collaborative was written into legislation uh to further the work that we're doing, which was something we did in connection, prior to needing legislation to do it. It is that important for us to do it constantly. We're looking at these numbers, not just to collect data for the sense of having data, but to have that in form of actions. Uh, and so I just want to thank the team and we continue to do that because as I said, uh, it, it is so important that, that we're doing that. So, so thank you and I want to thank the team. And I'm standing between you and lunch, so I recognize that. Uh, right now, you do have my report uh in your supplemental packet, just a few things that I'd highlight. And again, my apologies for being late this morning. We were having a meeting with the state members of the education committee uh and that went a little bit longer, so I know I missed uh some of the meeting. But a few things I wanted to highlight. So happy Valentine's Day. Uh, which is, which is great. A, a few things, uh, keeping on the, the, the theme of chronic absence. Uh, we had an event, uh Superintendent Nagron in, became an inviter stone for an event. Uh, she was joined by the mayor, Representative Walker, uh, members of the team here and just others locally to celebrate the increases that they're seeing in chronic absence. If you recall, we had a meeting uh over a year ago with the district, basically saying this was under different leadership, but we've got a concern uh and something that we need to work on. There were too many students that are in school. We also invited a staff member, uh, Carrie Sullivan, who you met here, that was meeting with them on a, thank you, you got the picture of it, thank you, Kim. Uh, meeting with them on a monthly, on a weekly basis, just to address the issue. And so we were there just to celebrate and thank them, including parents and the students for the work that they're doing. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. The other um update that I wanted to share with you, the governor had a state of the state address, uh, if you uh recall, and I was, was there. Uh, but also I was there with a visitor and so we had Tanner uh who joined us and he is uh Tanner Callahan, a junior at CCSU in their next gen educators program. Transitioning now to the Water Bear Public School as a registered teacher apprentice. We're working with the Department of Labor. As you know, we've shared it here to develop a registered, teacher-registered apprenticeship program. And we're moving there and this is starting, so we were able to have Tanner to join us, got a picture with the governor in his, in his office. Just really so thrilled. He said, I won't let you all down. So I was really excited about that. So it's good to see that, that program moving along. Uh, the other thing I wanted to update you on is that I participated in the inaugural meeting of the Connecticut Interagency Council on Homelessness. Uh, I thought that may be of interest to you. Uh, Governor Lamont established this new council. Uh, I'm serving as a, a member of that council. Important group of agency leaders, relevant, wise is relevant to us. And on our dashboard, I know Fajiz is still in the room, we have a dashboard now for students experiencing homelessness. You can take a look at it. Over five thousand students experiencing homelessness. And when you look at their nighttime residents, over three thousand are doubled up. Over a thousand are living in hotels, motels. Over six hundred are, are living in homeless shelters or emergency shelters and close to a hundred are unsheltered. Being and living in cars, parks, public places. And those are our students. And so it is so very important that as we talk about all of the challenges that this is there as well. So the governor's council, uh, interagency council is one where folks are looking at strengthening current programs, improving effectiveness of the response system and meeting the demands of housing. So uh, very thrilled that the governor has put that together and will continue to have those conversations, as I mentioned, very relevant to us. We had our literacy forum. Thank you, Mr. Exley, for attending our forum. It was very well attended. And Laura, let's make sure we send the link to the CTN uh for that uh to, to make sure that we, we're able to share that with the board members. So it's, it was like three hours, so you may not be able to do it in one sitting. Uh, but it was really a good conversation with national folks in the room talking to us about what literacy and the right to read looks like on a national uh level. Uh, we had state level and really had the, the longest uh uh discussions panel was our educators who really talked about the work that they're doing locally. So we're really thrilled to be able to do that. The other update I wanted to provide uh is we had a press conference at Hillcrest Elementary School in Weathersfield to announce the investment of four million dollars for educator projects through the Connecticut Educator Support Funds Initiative. Uh, I'm thanking, you know, Charlie Kenyon here, who is uh works in my office, who helped to put that together. But we're really thrilled that we were able to fund educators to go get up to a thousand dollars for projects in their classrooms. Really excited and within almost a week, I think we were able to utilize all the funded, but forty, four thousand, six hundred and thirty-five funded projects at seven hundred and fifty-six schools across the state uh from over, projects from over a hundred and fifty districts. So we'll, we'll provide more information to you about that, but just wanted to share that that happened. Um, also congratulating uh Christina Almeida from O'Shanan Elementary School in Soullington, who is a twenty-twenty-four kid governor. Uh, was able to be uh in that, with them. And I promised them I'm going to invite our kid governor and the kid governor's cabinet to this board uh for our board meeting. So look forward to, to doing that. Uh, there were a couple of national presentations that I was able, uh, really honored to participate in. One was the White House Domestic Policy Council on improving student achievement to talk about our lead program and the work that we're doing here in Connecticut. Uh, and also to uh share with uh the folks, uh, some other colleagues uh about what's going on in international education and where the US staff was able to do that. So uh, that's where we are. So uh, that's my report. Just a few more things to update you on. And Deputy Commissioner Cynthia Sonemaiana is here to provide a few updates uh for, from the talent office and then we'll be through.
Okay, we're trying to keep this short and speaking because I know I'm clean, I'm sure to lunch, but uh I'm taking here um in the space for Dr. Tucker, who could be present today, just to give you a few of our talent updates. Uh, first want to um make you all aware that we are implementing base two of enhanced diversity. The Bureau of Educators Standards and Certification. The Bureau of Educator Standards and Certification is pleased to announce 10 additional Midwestern and Southern states have been added to the current pathways of educators to obtain certification through the Enhanced Reciprocity Agreement, and that will be effective March 1st. We've highlighted here in the space, um, that encompass the space 2. Um, we're very proud of this, uh, because from April 22th to January 25th, we've been able to employ, face reciprocity, 960 newly-employed educators in our state. So we're hoping that, um, by widening this net, that that would mean, um, more educators will come and work for our great state. And this is one of those other, um, ways in which we're really taking, uh, a look at how we're going to, to secure the shortage that we have. So we're hoping that by widening this net, um, it would be most internal investment. I just wanted to share that and highlight, uh, that Phase 2 is beginning to affect March 1st of this year. Next, also wanted to share, um, that to also, as we're continuously working with, um, our Bureau of Special Education Services and the talent office, and we hear that to be a lot clearer, we meet with them regularly, that, um, parent educators is also another area in which there is shortage and, um, specifically in Title I districts, those just , they, there's specific requirements that are in place to hire, um, these individuals who help support teachers in the classroom and other certified professionals. And so what we are planning, uh, applying, uh, is the flexibility for parent educators who, um, want to work in our state, who have passed one of the requirements, which is an actual assessment. Um, Connecticut uses the parent pro assessment. However, if you take an assessment in another state and have passed it, um, we're determining that to be equivalent to our parental in allowing that as, um, an opportunity to get, uh, hired here in our state. And very similar to what we do with teachers, there are specific requirements for assessments, um, where we allow that flexibility. So that is something that we're also implementing forward. Also wanted to bring to your attention that, um, we are, you know, we've been involved in the Public Act 23 dash 167, Section 10 mandate, which is the increasing education diversity plans. We wanted to give you an update that, uh, to date, we've been working with districts and providing technical assistance. Um, we started, um, as of the fall and today we've had five webinars, um, that have been very, uh, well-attended by not just superintendents, but also in specific districts, some of their, um, equity or diversity coordinators are also part of that. And there we're providing technical assistance, uh, providing them with information, but also having that interactive dialogue where we're also answering questions they may have in developing these plans. Um, it's, it is that we have a established process that we are going, they're implementing to respond to any inquiries. The first, uh, phase of these plans have to begin in March 15th. And from there, um, our department is working on providing them feedback and, uh, technical support that's needed. You know, you can develop a plan, but as the commissioner always states, the work can really be a limitation. Um, and some, this is very important work as we continue to, uh, meet our state priorities of diversifying our, our staff, that it's one that we're going to establish in the districts where they are and helping them develop these plans, but also implement and provide the technical support that's needed as this process evolves. Um, so those are our high-level updates that we wanted to give and I have, if you answer any questions you can have.
Thank you very much. So that's our total agency update.
Well, thank you for the, uh, the, uh, update on, um, the talent office activity as well. Um, these are all, I know the items that are reported really that, um, very much about this, um, uh, how we're going to need for our, our students and, uh, addressing for net and difference in, in our state. So, uh, thank you for that presentation. Are there questions? Commendations, fun.
I take commendations.
Uh, what was the purpose, what's the purpose of the webinars?
Yeah, so the webinars are to, they vary, but they're really very informational. We start from the section of the actual, uh, legislation, uh, and what is required of districts. But the webinars really are to enhance how they're going to do this work, what is needed, what are some people who are some of our toolkits that were already previously developed, how they can use that to develop their, their plans. Um, and then what is that they have to submit and how they do that. So it's really more technical assistance. And as you know, districts are, can be anywhere with that, right? So it's just kind of like leveling this, uh, the playing field for everyone, but really answering some detailed questions that they may have. Uh, in the webinars, we have members of our talent, of our talent office as well as legal. There are a lot of, um, legal questions that may come up, but it's really to provide technical assistance. We're going to need support to our districts.
Regarding the parent educator information that you provided, I understand this as a requirement for, for a new hire. Do we have existing, um, parent educators who need to meet these requirements? And do we have a sense of what, what that universe is and what are these have, happening to help, uh, help them there?
Yeah, so that work is happening at all levels right across the state, um, in regards to districts, when they have specific questions, they may have, they, our contact is actually Sharon, who's behind the, um, where they fall and they can have specific questions. But, um, we also have different councils that are in place to support districts as it relates to special education services, where a lot of these parent educators fall in that work. Um, and you worked, we've worked, right, with directors in how to support them, but in, um, in meeting those requirements, meeting the requirements, but also, we also provide them, um, uh, mechanisms and systems where they can also recruit as well and help the districts.
Yeah, and clear on the new hires, I guess what I wasn't, wasn't, um, clear around is whether we had, when this law, the law been in place, but were there people already working that needed to get into compliance? And do we have a universe of people that were, hopefully getting comprised or that's not an issue?
No, that, that's, but the issue is to get folks to pass the, the assessment that's available to them, which we're now providing some financial supports for. And just to attract enough of them, uh, into the space and then move them through what they need to be able to be parent educators in the classroom. Uh, so this, this, we're looking at this because we've learned about folks who've come into the Connecticut, have been passed a similar assessment in their state, but now wants to teach, wants to work in Connecticut. And so that's why we're trying to do the reciprocity and surround that. But there is a shortage and so we're looking at every possible way. We've worked with the Department of Labor, we had some job fairs, uh, to bring folks into, we even had high school students who may want to do that, you know, right after high school. And it gets them in a pathway because it's also a pathway for our educated workforce and that continues, uh, as well. So we're, we're trying to get, trying to get in as many people as possible into this space.
And they made barriers, right? A lot of this came specifically from the field, things that they have, um, and they're trying to find ways in so we can work with them, attracting and also.
All right, any other questions for the commissioner? Yeah.
I, in the previous slide, I think, about three, yeah, score of 457 on the, yes, parent pro. I, you know, I'm, I'm familiar with the SAT scoring ranges, but I have no idea what that means.
Uh, so I mean, the parent pro exam is for, is assessment, uh, it's for parent educators.
Obviously.
So, uh, there is a, a cut score, or a score for them as well.
What, what was it like?
200 to 800 is what, with the range of scores on that?
So these, these requirements are federal requirements for parent educators who work in schools or districts that receive Title I funding. So with, um, with COVID, we had flexibility for teachers and now with the reciprocity for teachers and the assessment. So we're, we're getting requests, what about for parent educators? So the parent pro assessment was, um, as needed by Connecticut, I think by the state board, although that was before my time and I couldn't find the notes on the webpage, only go back so far, but, um, the 457 is the cut score that Connecticut determined. Um, it's, it's a combination of scores in reading, writing, and mathematics on the parent pro. Um, if you go to the parent pro site, there's cut scores for different states. Um, we're probably in the, the mid to higher range of the score, but I, I don't know the particular formula, but it is a reflection of the candidate's, um, assessment in reading, writing, and mathematics.
So you don't know what?
The range. The range is.
The range.
All right, well, with that, thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you, Commissioner, as always, for all of the work, um, and for the, for the timely updates on information. Um, partners, seeing no other action, I think we have reached the point where I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 11:53.
We'll move.
Thank you all. Have a wonderful, wonderful afternoon.